We have little doll.
If you know.
Any.
Thank you, Chairman.
Chair. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, I believe we have Udo Dante to talk to us about possibility of balls, courts in Chandos Park. Okay, so how long will you talk? Uh, three minutes.
But it's your discretion, I can't get any more.
Yeah.
What do you want me to do?
Yeah, please. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I'm here on behalf of Buckingham Twinning. And as you know, we had been running a ball festival to celebrate that steel day in the cattle market for several years. And it's obviously quite a performance, setting it all up, getting hay bales, getting sand and then clearing it all up again for the following morning. So last year there was some, some talk about what about if we had a permanent rule court here in Buckingham? And I had been tasked with mentioning it, so, so to make the proposal. Um, obviously a permanent rule court would, would naturally be available for all, all the people in Buckingham. Uh, not just, not just for the acoustic, uh, sorry. Sorry, you should have waited for music in the market, but I've retired. Um, um, not, obviously not just for the, for the twinnies, but, but for everybody. And my suggestion would be to put it in Chandos Park. There is a space between the tennis courts and the basketball, uh, ball court.
Mm.
Which is eleven metres wide and well in excess of twenty metres deep. A standard bull court is four by fifteen. So there would be room there to put two side by side or make one double width one, which would probably be a little bit less expensive. Um, obviously it would need to be contained with, with boarding of some sort. And obviously it needs a base, it needs gravel and it needs, it needs a gravel base or, or possibly a sand base. Or I've even seen crushed shells used in some areas. Um, so that would be my proposal to put it there. And the reason I put it there was because obviously it's, it's, it's not isolated. We have public toilets right, right opposite. We have a play area for around the corner for the children. There are bound to be some children as well who might not want to play balls. Um, and so I think it would be, it would be a good solution. It would be a good place to put it. Um, and so I'm really asking for some, for some feedback. And also what would you want from me to, uh, to progress it from my side? I mean, would you want a written proposal? Um, would you want me to quote for it? Well, I, I'm assuming you would have contractors, like the people who made the skate park, for example, would probably build something like that quite easily.
Okay. Um, so because it's not actually on the agenda, it's not something we can actually discuss this evening. But if members wish to, um, um, post any questions to you, then, then we'd love them welcome to do so.
Okay.
Oh, if it's acceptable, Chair, yeah, what I would suggest is why don't we have a chat?
Yes.
Um, and then we can all cut a report on the next environment agenda, um, for members to make a decision. Um, when they've had a chance to have a look at these, at the various different issues.
Okay.
If I may, I am slightly jumping, I know it shouldn't really be discussed. Chandos will be problematic location wise. Um, it floods. I understand it's flooded twice this year up to there. So if it flooded and it was a gravel surface, that could be quite, well, it'd have to be gravelled every time. So location wise, I don't think that's going to work. Also, I understand the tennis club are looking at that area for planning as well.
That's what I was gonna say. It's totally been a process, isn't it?
So why don't we have a meeting or phone call at that and we'll, between the three of us, we'll see if we can come up with any ideas.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure, I'm sure, I'm sure there will be, there will be people here who will, who will have other alternative suggestions to make for a location. Yeah, I mean, this is just my initial, my initial idea. That's, you know, certainly not setting any kind of stone.
I feel happy with that, Chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I will be.
Yeah, obviously when it comes to the bowls, the bowls competition, bowls, it's a completely different game, isn't it? Um, competition's never been very successful. Uh, it never got beyond probably the second round. But I do think it's wonderful that you keep doing it. And I accept the points about gravel, about putting the sand out and whatever. And I think most interested in the report that, that is published um, for the next agenda, which if done in cooperation, it will respect all views, won't it?
Yeah.
Um, and maybe it's something that, well, we can see it based upon the evidence that we get given, you know, rather than make false promises and saying, yes, that's a good idea.
Certainly can't do that.
You know, but I think seeing a report would at least brush out what, what the question is and how we, if possible, it's resolved.
Yeah, yeah, great. No, I fully appreciate it. I don't expect a decision today. But if, what I'm asking is that you give it some thought, please.
Make some.
Yeah. Um, this can obviously be a thing, um, to go back to the offices, to maybe find out how the tennis club, if they're even progressing that, because that was a plan that we spoke, they came to us last year, wasn't it? Yeah. Um, it's, it's a difficult one because the flat areas, even in Borton Park, that gets flooded as well by the mugger. At the bottom there, you know, first of all, it's flooding badly. The only place to be to green at the church. Nice flat area. But yeah, it's, it's a good idea.
I'll speak to the bishop.
Yeah.
In order to thank the members who agree.
Yeah. There's that, um, black bit at the back of the skate park, but I don't know if the two sports might, uh,
Yeah, no.
might collide.
Right. So thank you very much, Udo.
Thank you for listening.
Um, Claire and Lee, we thought, uh, we think also we want to.
Would, would you like to take my email address in case anybody wanted to get, you've got it? Right. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you've got nowhere to go, well, you're welcome to stay. We're not going to be having someone all the way through the year.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. See you afterwards.
Really want to have Winslow, by the way. So we'll.
Okay. Might be, might be an idea to, um, share, yeah, that location, et cetera. And is that Winslow town?
It's, um, it's, um, attached to our group, um, the, um, well, Falls Club, no, that's a Bowls Club.
Yeah. Yeah. Whereabouts is it? When you go into Winslow? Is there a me roundabout?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's, um, you know, where's the, um, village hall is, that hall on the left?
Yeah, that's the Bowls Club.
Behind that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's quite a large, it's quite a large area. It's seventeen metres by fifteen, because I haven't measured it so.
Okay.
Yeah. Good idea. I'll just say once. Talk to you. Thank you. Putting it in, um, on Chandos Park, you've got the, a home there. Well, you know, the, the elderly people, I don't think they do dementia, so that would give another facility.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Bye. Okay, so that's the end of the session. Thank you very much. And we move on to the agenda. Uh, apologies for absence. I think apologies from councillor Shaker and councillor Liddell. Thank you. And, and still we have any declarations of interest? We have the items, mate. And you've seen the, uh, the minutes of the last meeting.
Yeah.
Um, all happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then we're looking at the, it's, we'll, um, look at those figures if there's any questions, I'm sure Claire will agree. We'll have to explain. Robbie.
Yeah, it's on the, it is six of, six of forty-five. Um, is that the, it's got section one O six, um, four, six O seven. Obviously, that's the, um, Thomas Park. Um, what's, what often, it's quite, um, useful, maybe a few dates to see what is in our section one O six is, um, here because of that of melting conversations that we have about wishes to do things. And, um, and there are some other things that aren't in here, which are historical conversations like Ashford Tur, which was in there and it'd be useful for maybe you and the chair to look at that. And if it's a project, we'll, we'll have a meeting because I do think it would give us an understanding of what money is available. When we have hopes to wish and whether there can be any other people seem to have a variant, variant section one O six. It's, um, if we use it in some way.
Um, obviously going off the agenda, but an answer to your question. Um, yes, I have been discussing, it isn't something that really goes forward in the borough. We've met before, before council actually got planning.
Don't talk planning, because we only had a role in English, don't we?
It's on the planning list, so it's just regularly by planning.
Yeah, of course, so.
But, um, through, through you, Chair, my view is that when it comes to projects, it would be the honour of committee which may want to take a project forward and having an understanding of, or even if it's an internal understanding of what's there, bringing it forward at the appropriate time would be a good thing. Um, having just lost money for car parking in, um, in contribution, we lost that money to a second one. You see, we handed that from punctures of not handing any money back to the developer. And planning won't make the decision necessarily on the project. So I think maybe it's worth at one time looked at just to understand whether it picks in of anything that we're planning or might plan to do in the future.
I would like to very much make clear that it wasn't ourselves that lost that.
I do know that.
No, but it just, you played when you were watching, it wasn't ourselves that lost that money. And there wasn't anything that I think we could have done differently on, on that, in that regard. Um, I would, we'll have a chat there if you're happy. Yeah, and, and there would be relative to this committee, there isn't stepping on the toes of other committees and other discussions.
I think that's, if this, um, section one O six money that is being spent on, um, car parks, et cetera. I think it is relevant to this committee, really.
It is, but the overall, it depends what we've got. Now, if it's the overall wish list, then that's a different matter because that does fall under the most in plans. We can talk about, yeah.
I'm making.
But we don't.
Um.
By the way. Oh, yeah.
I'm here alone. Um, page five, forty-five. The rates for the century. I see the red note that said this cost has been confirmed as correct. Is there a story as to why we budgeted a thousand fifty-six, but somehow the Shire or the charge is two thousand two hundred? What's the story, Liam, then?
There was a report, I think, to the last environment where it was detailed, John, um, but but he's very short. There was a national revaluation that took place. Um, and that was the cost that came out of it. It's not necessarily the Shire account.
I agree. All right.
I don't have that before memorised, but there was.
But that's, that's a wonderful school. Thank you.
Robbie.
Six of, um, forty-five again. Um, I've been reading the outcomes of the CCTV and the fact that we received a grant cost. I presume that it's on this budget at some point. Um, implication and implementation of that money to take place. I'm believing for you, Chair, that.
It's got a pretty thick top down, hasn't it?
Yeah, that, that it would be proven, I think, that, that in the right manner that we, as a left of members, discuss that um, implication of that and where, uh, i- in some form or fashion, even if it's only just to say, yes, that's happening, note the report, just so that we, it's a long time since we discussed it. And I know it's been actually difficult for the office to countenance the funds, so then when we're not.
It was installed back in months ago.
Would it? In which case.
And we have, we have, can you read it? I saw it before, very bad at sorts.
Okay, my bad. I, 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 I did look to it.
The confusion might be county for talking about doing some things as well. That grant is from the PCC.
Yeah, there's, there's another conversation about, about CCTV.
There was a conversation with county, but we were kind of way ahead of them. We got the grant from the PCC, we just carried on, we've heard nothing from county about any money.
Well, which case, I, I think it's probably a good press release and that. And I mean, look, we've actually installed it and it's working. It's a positive.
About eight months now. It's a bit of a news.
Yeah.
I think. Very odd. Um, thank you.
This being pedantic, um, on page five of forty-five, we've got semi large income, then semi large income again, but I think it should be expenditure.
Where am I looking, sorry?
The bottom of page five forty-five.
Uh, so we have semi large winter income, that's the rental money we get.
Yeah, and then the next heading should be expenditure.
You are correct. Yes, you are. Two five eight, semi large, that should be expenditure. I'm sorry.
And it's not you being pedantic at all.
Margaret, you missed it.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to speak to the officers for, um, all their work and thinking this budget so closely. We've been quite good on it all.
Yeah.
Yeah. There will, obviously, we, we put quite a few invoices through right until the end of the year. Though this, as I did know, the, the end of October, it isn't finalised on yet.
Yeah.
And environment obviously has quite a big portfolio, where it looks like they're maybe big underspends. The, that is both looking to rebuild our remotes, which I'd be glad to dip into, so. It's, I'm happy with it. I hope you'll have it. It's balanced. But we will be losing money to the remotes, so we've got that whole chest because we've got projects and things we know are going to need repairing, they said, across the next five years.
Yeah.
Okay, we move on to last property policy reviewing. This is you.
Hopefully, yes. So it's just to review the, um, policy, finally, probably. Um, and it's just to get numbers to agree that we review it three at a time. And the policy seems to be working well, but a good number of options, it's um, effective. And I'm sorry, it's working well. We just wanted to catch us through your review.
Margaret. Yeah, thank you. I'm sure it's, it's a, a good policy. I was just slightly surprised that a hearing aid was destroyed because if they specs say this, for instance, they will re, I don't know quite what happens to them, but they will take old hearing aids. Um, I don't know what they do with them, but, you know, like they do take old glasses and things, but they, they definitely do take old hearing aids. Yeah.
Yeah.
So in the future, if, I mean, it's a bit of an unusual thing, not to have been claimed actually, but in the future, if there were such a thing, be worth, good, you know, passing on.
And I'll say it. John.
I'll be, this proposal is out of recommendation.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, through you, Chair, the, it's useful to see that some of the things that haven't been owned have been donated to the cause, whatever that's, uh, that's, um, means they're recycled and not adding to landfill and that's a really good thing. And we won't go into who they were in the report, but it's nice to see that that kind of phrase is in place, you know, that stuff is refurbished, which is, um, they did, one of them is refurbished, so that's even better, isn't it?
Yeah.
Business for them. I know that Chair spends a lot of time stitching that button on, now the people in the.
I haven't stitched. One sticker button on, yeah.
But, uh, but lots of people with pockets out and things seem to come down on a repair cafe, so I think it's good that it's repaired and recycled.
So John's proposed that we accept the report.
That can be.
It's called out.
Beautiful, I don't mind.
All those in favour? Thank you very much. Okay, happy sock bench. So this is you again, Lee.
Yeah, it's just following on from, uh, the biggest, uh, re- recommendation. Uh, we looked into it and we thought the best location was actually down bottom of Car Park, there's about a few benches down there.
Yeah.
Um, we haven't talked to, uh, I can't share yet directly about this until we got it going from this committee. But, um, a little while ago, I'm in, just, uh, in really bad condition now, and it's reportedly exposed to past farming, uh, bugs. And they are looking into replacing work benches. Nothing's, but nothing's definite from there, the end of it, from the project, but it might be a good time to sort of find with that if there's some new benches down there.
Yeah.
And we can carry on the discussion with them. And then issues and ideas, and I'm going to say that.
Okay, so someone in the market, they're more pages.
Uh, great to see. Thank you, Lee, for doing this. I've got my thoughts. One is, um, I think I've got side, there'd been some remedial work on the benches. I remember checking my way here and seeing them, but I think I've got side on some new wood.
Okay.
On the, I, 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 really many. As I walked in here, I thought there was something else going to check before I came in. I'm only now that I remember what it was. Um, so I think it's a great location that you've selected because there are alternatives. Of course, the Shire may say no for a variety of reasons. So the thought occurred to me is whether we could also do one in Chandos. Maybe the thought occurred to me is as you're walking from the tennis courts to the area where the children's playground, I think there were two benches just there side by side. And also that's on our ground.
Hmm.
Um, and I'm wondering whether that could be another location. Not an alternative, but another, because we have two locations around the town.
Yeah.
That, that was one thought. And the second thought was, you mentioned about being a plastic plaque. I'm assuming this is going to be something substantive that's screwed in place and not simply an asset, an insult, an everything, because they will just get ripped off.
Yeah.
Um, but I'm assuming that's the case. Otherwise, right?
Thank you, John. Margaret.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think it's a brilliant idea. We're fully supportive. I suspect one of the reasons why those benches have got so bad is that they've been flooded, you know, and, and that will happen to, well, unless something very strange happens, we are going to continue to have flooding down there. And that will happen to the new benches and refurbished benches as well. That doesn't mean it's not a good location for it, but it's just something to bear in mind. And those benches in Chandos, probably just slightly higher, they're a little bit further back from the river, aren't they? But they still could get flooded there, I think. I'm not sure whether it might.
Probably have more days when they're not flooded than, than when they are, if you do.
Yeah, it's, it's not. Yeah, but the point is that it damages the bench really. Um, and they would need a lot, they would need maintenance after flood, but, and that's probably.
Well, the benches will, whether there's flack, flacks on them to say this is a chatty beach or not.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then, these aren't our benches, are they?
Same type of bench, actually. They must have been installed at the same time. Luckily, they've got metal frames and all, so.
Hmm. It's just a punt really, but like, you know, to bear in mind, that was all. I think it's, the, you know, in principle, it's really, really good when there are other benches around, so people wants to sit, but they, they don't, they don't want to talk to anybody. They've got other options.
Yeah.
Robbie.
Yeah. Most of what's said on the benches is, is accurate. I just, I just hope that they refurbish them rather than replace them because the steel frames look really very good.
Hmm.
And I think those benches are designed to be refurbished rather than destroyed. It would seem completely, um, wrong if they took them out to put other benches in there because timber is renewable and it's renewable.
Quite a nice design, isn't it?
And they're quite a nice design and, and they are part of that walk. So, um, I'm happy that we look at whatever's possible. Um, just to make the note that, um, separate to this, I am in, as a, in another place in conversations to probably replant two other benches.
That's some of the, the actual.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, so I, I think it's a, the report look forward to the thing. I don't see why anyone would object to a plaque on a bench. And, um, it's really silly. Um, and if they're not going to buy the plaque, why would they be objecting to better use of their facilities? So.
Okay, so the costs coming here.
I was going to suggest numbers if you're happy, if you're happy to agree the initial recommendation, we'll feed to bugs. We'll look at the, uh, different benches in Chandos, we'll get a price on the plaque. And we'll bring it to the next meeting with another date of what bugs are going to do and recommendations for.
Yeah.
Yeah, to agree the costs.
That's, that's fine to me. So with that in mind, I would obviously be agreeing to what Ted suggested.
Yeah, yeah. All those in favour? Excellent. Okay, so that is the agenda for the interactive trial. Um, my question, Buckinghamshire Council, um, have you all read the?
Mm-hmm.
Um, does anybody want to talk on it first or are we just going to extract questions or at least go on?
Thank you. Um, I just wonder why they took so long to ask us? Because they, they launched in May twenty twenty-three and they could have contacted us a bit sooner, a year on.
Yeah.
So I think that's a shame that they didn't, um, make contact and.
Maybe they just realised where, you know.
But other than that, I think it's a really good idea. Yeah.
Um, Lucy, I should say, I agree.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Robbie, you've actually already.
Yeah, I was just saying that, but we, through you, Chair, there's quite a lot of stuff that we put in the, um, gyms trail in Borton Park. Um, it's likely that went in and that was sort of interactive and, um, and you sometimes see people down the park using it.
Such a good thing, I think.
Yeah, but it's still.
Like, like the, it's like Patrick O'Gorman type thing, isn't it?
Yeah, but, um, it's nice that they recognise we are here.
Yeah.
And, um, and maybe that, that is continued.
So all those in favour? Good, good. Data. Comment, emergency question, can I, if I've got any comments on there? You've been waiting for your hand.
No.
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 Both of us informed. No. Okay, so we'll note that.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Um, and then we are on the action report. Margaret.
Yeah, thank you. The, um, six one nine stroke twenty-three. The heading is motion councillor Gately, but it doesn't actually say what the motion was about and it's about the no idling zones. Can I propose that that, the action list is amended to show that that is what the, rather than my name on it, it's about no idle zone, about five schools.
Yes.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Do we know yet what the letter was?
Um, just very, very, yes, I think they want to, they want to be friendly about it, so. Um, we're going to see what the other schools want to do, if that's all right with you, so that we can have a consistent approach across, but.
I know there is, um, someone that I bumped into a couple of weeks ago, um, sent me an email saying that she's going to be attending AGM. Is that on the eighteen? And sure. And a town meeting, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, and I think she wanted to talk about it then, so it is being picked up by local residents.
Very good. Very good. John.
Um, it would help me if there was some dates attached to this. I know we've got a minute reference, but, but just a little date. Um, in a separate column or underneath the, the minute number would be helpful to me. Um, I appreciate that there are sometimes lots of those. But at least in the beginning, when the thing was initiated, because sometimes this seems to go on for years.
Well, there's been years on there, isn't it?
Well, I know, but. Well, I know, but I think it would be helpful to have a sense of timing with the last of the months as well.
Well, I mean, I would say so, Chair, so I, this is just supposed to be a brief memory prompt of what's going on, but there is a limit to how much information we put on there, it tends to be quite a few snapshots, you know?
Okay, all right, it's not, it's not a great thing for this.
Like, I take on board, if I, I mean, some of these have been, especially things like street vision, but since I have been hanging around for a long time, but they are, I don't know, completely.
Lucy? Um, I was just wondering if, um, we have an update on the benches. On the benches six two one, so twenty-three.
Yeah, go on, Robbie.
Um.
We're dying to talk about it all.
I was dying to talk about it all and, and hopefully I'll live long enough to be, say what it is now, um, but, um, I am currently in discussions as a Buckinghamshire councillor with the hotel and Zillies and, and the, and they said they'd come back to me this week. So I hope that I can progress that discussions to a satisfactory situation, which I am, the town clerk, informed. I hope that by the end of that discussion, we may be in a positive position where it would agreement, the town council would, um, take over those benches, in which case it would be this committee's decision thereafter what's happened to those benches, that you think it's, that they should be repurposed in a positive way. Um, if we do that in a nice polite conversation, that's much better than anything else, so I'm working on that and I will um, follow it up later in the week, but, um, if not at the end of the week, if we haven't been contacted again, so I hope that helps. What I can't say is that I've got a yes, no or indifferent that we're having that, but the fact that they want to talk about it is a good thing.
So I would have thought as though our property aid, maybe.
That's a different question, is property, they are, but, um.
Okay. Anybody else, anything else on the action list, okay, so leave to that, thank you. Um, so then we move on to Brackley Road Cemetery, which first is a handbook and your update to, um, we see the important form, I didn't see it, Debbie, is it?
Yes, uh, I mean, updates that we do to the handbook, just part, knowledge of clarifying things. And I think major change, we just changed the burial time slightly, just so the guys can be used also burials in daylight.
Hmm.
Sometimes the barrels are quite quick, it's not an issue, but sometimes they can't remember, it's just not safe back coming, that's great, so.
Yeah.
And that just in the winter. Yeah, we have two conclusions.
So, Robbie?
Firstly, thank you, Bea, for the work you've done on it, for the change. I'm presuming that, um, we can all hope at some point you'll be choosing to second that book one day maybe, and, um, on a new cemetery, and which many of the best practices may form part of what that is, but, um, it is worth amending it and it is worth updating it, even though it will be, um, an historic cemetery at some point, we hope.
John?
I'm super proposing to accept the recommendation. Thank you.
Margaret? Can I just sort of play the possibility, although I, I do think it's, it's fantastic, whether you need to define what winter means? When you, is that during the time of, of GMT rather than? It does define it, does it?
Yeah. March.
Oh, wait, a second, yeah, okay, I'm over to not, yeah, thank you, sorry, I should have noticed, I was just looking for the right paragraph. Thank you.
Okay, so John, please just accept. Yeah, yeah, a second up.
Everybody.
Margaret, second up. All in favour? Thank you very much. Come on, more, more graves commissioned tours. Um, let's see, we've got a statement.
So the gentleman, I've been a few times at cemetery already, um, he goes to volunteer, he goes around and main part as well was inspect, checking the, um, commonwealth all graves and, and making sure they're in good order. Actually, he's got a few repairs coming out, I think on some of them, and, um, had a good chat with him and he's even pointed out a few graves that I couldn't know, but they're not the commonwealth's all white graves, they're graves that, like, people have done themselves, but people have died on walls and things like that.
Okay.
Before the Commonwealth all graves commission existed. And he really came to look at all of the, um, all graves and, yeah, but it just supported, but.
Hmm.
It's probably pretty.
Yeah. Yeah, all those in favour? I could break through those stairs on that.
Have those gone at all?
All right. Um, then we've got a number of search inspections, um. Again, Lee.
So we just had the, um, the repairs carried out for the last, on the last inspection, um. There's three left, which we call Act Two, which we're going to, uh, keep inspecting and keep an eye on. Um, one of the ones, older ones, weren't quite straightforward repairs, uh, so we're going to reassess what we do with them and how we deal with those, but it's really good to see a lot of the old, this time being repaired. Um, this is just, I think, I'm ready to start again, um, the extension, as we call it, um, what's up with engineering, the whole process, yeah?
Robbie?
Two questions, but you, Chair, one is, clearly at some point, when the Brackley Road Cemetery becomes an historic cemetery, we'll still have an obligation to do these inspections, I would believe, so we'll still have to make sure we budget for that.
Mm-hmm.
Secondly, it's quite notable how, um, that we haven't received a huge, um, amount of complaints with what's gone on, which must mean that you handled it very sensitively and, and with cooperation, having remembered the first time that any memorial testing was done by the district council, who still were the bearing authority, um, where they didn't, um, yeah, you can sit away and consult the actual residents, which means that you're doing a really good job about making sure that we inform the grave owners, that we do it always independently and whatever, because, um, I wouldn't wish that on any of you, really, it was quite awful. Um, and we were not the bearer of horror, we owned the land, but at that point, the burial body hadn't been transferred to us and before it was transferred to us, they gave memorial testing. And, um, and we were still to drop it, so what I'm saying was well done, that you, oh, oh, we're not receiving people here complaining, which means you're doing a really good job.
At least, at least being.
Done a good job.
Caps, caps on top of it and caps, it's a wrong and great one, if you work, um, and communicate very well with, with the public, I'm sure. Yeah, Lucy?
Uh, just to add to that, that, you know, I've got quite a few friends buried in Brackley Road Cemetery and it's always really well maintained. The, you're allowed to add a personal touch to memorials, um, people are allowed to leave things there as long as they're not, you know, messy or, well, whatever, but it's just, it's a really nice place to go and visit and think, and, um, yeah, so, thank you for, yeah.
Margaret? No, no, sorry, I think I have, okay, so, um, we, um, no, that report, it wasn't a recommendation, it was a, no, it's just a report, okay. So we moved on to, this list, is there something we've got in it? Looks, and nothing really going on, you know?
It's been too wide back time.
Yeah, so I think we can leave that for this one. Um, Chair's announcements, um, I'd just like to bring to your attention the email that Claire forwarded earlier regarding the, um, Great Ouse pollution incident, um, and, um, Claire's initial, um, very promptly response to it, um, it's not something that we're able to discuss now, but I'll just make sure that you, well, have a look at it. And it will be on the other, um, um, agenda. Okay, thank you. Um.
Good to say, thank you for the response.
Yeah.
Um, I'll see what response we get somewhere else, because I've got a written question in, see if it matches your response, it'd be interesting.
Robbie? I will, when I get, I only got that later, so, when I get a moment, I will try and do some background research and see if I can find anything else, but, um, and I will report back as soon as I get to the front. But, yeah. It's, um, doesn't seem to make much sense, does it, anyway? It's not something where we need to discuss, we can just leave it in there. Um, so, and then, the next meeting is Monday, so, so the closest meeting. Sorry, Chair? Need to resolve if we're going to private. I'm just going to do that, are we going to private session? Yeah.
But hopefully we can follow that.
Yeah.
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 The source, yeah.
Yeah.